Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Cabarrus County Schools Board of Education Work Session and Joint Public Hearing tonight for our 2013-14 Budget. And so we're glad you all could be here, and I'd like to call the meeting to order at this time. And the first item on our agenda tonight is to set the agenda as it is presented. Are there any changes, comments, or anything, or do I have a motion that the agenda be approved as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Carpenter, seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing at this time, so I would like to have a motion that we open the public hearing.
So moved.
Mr. Kiker made the motion that we open the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Do we need to make way for Mr. Monroe?
She'll, we'll get, we'll catch her up. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Who seconded? Mr. Harrison? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, the, we're open session, and we're open for the public hearing. Tonight, we have several speakers that have signed up, and so far, we have four speakers that have signed up prior to six o'clock this afternoon. Ms. Monroe, do we have any additional speakers? Okay, thank you. And so our first speaker tonight is Kirsten Saunders, and she's from the Wolf Meadow Elementary School PTO. So you'll have five minutes to speak to us tonight, and there's a little clock on your left, you'll see it right there, see on the podium, the little clock?
Oh, okay, yeah, I see it.
And so when you, five minutes is getting close, you'll see a little old yellow light come up, let you know your time's running out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. Again, my name is Kirsten Saunders. I am a parent representing Wolf Meadow. I love Cabarrus County Schools. I have three kids in three different schools this year, and am very excited and wouldn't have my kids go anywhere else. But my main concern tonight is Wolf Meadow. The facilities, and asking for your assistance in consideration as you plan next year's budget. The several concerns regarding our school's safety is the main thing that I want to address. Our school opened in 1974, and at that time, many schools like Wolf Meadow were designed with an open concept where rooms were separated by temporary partitions and not walls. The school's media center has neither walls nor partitions, and is susceptible from all angles. While this design may have had educational benefits, in this age, it is a safety concern. This allows for easy access by anyone to move quickly between the classrooms without solid barriers. There is no solid surface other than the external wall to shield children in case of attack, and in light of recent occurrences, it is a major security concern. As you know, the state's emergency management plan for the schools instructs teachers to close their doors, pull their blinds, placing green or red placards in the windows to indicate the situation in the room. At Wolf Meadow, most windows that are adjacent to the doors of the external side of the building have no blinds. In fact, if the teachers have bought the blinds for themselves, then they're in each room. Some simple blinds would just deter any outside person from looking in on our kids. Research and best practices acknowledge the importance of schools being inviting, safe, and welcoming environments. However, great teachers, pleasant support staff can only do so much. Unfortunately, there are several internal issues that affect the cleanliness and the aesthetics of Wolf Meadow. Several classrooms have carpet that was installed in the opening of the school 39 years ago. One can only imagine the things that have been on this carpet over that time, and that simple steam cleaning is no longer effective. There are cabinets throughout the campus that are falling down. Thirty-nine years of wear and tear and missing hardware have resulted in a situation where it's only a matter of time before a child gets hit by falling door. The coat racks, the, where the kids have to hang their bookbags, they can no longer be repaired because there's discontinued parts. There's large potholes throughout the entire campus. In the, matter of fact, I was speaking with a lady today who said last year she stepped out of her car and fell in the parking lot. Now, yes, she didn't get hurt, and she didn't report it to anybody, but our kids have to dodge these potholes just to get to the playground. Where our kids are picked up and dropped off in the morning time, there is not even a concrete pad for them to walk on. They have to walk through the mud on rainy days just to get to class. We, the PTO, have tried raising funds for projects over the last few years, and as the president of the PTO, I am aware that no matter what funds have been collected, there never seems to be enough money. We can't stay ahead of all the needs. With 81 percent of our student population receiving free and reduced lunch, it is difficult to ask parents to give what they just don't have. Please know, though, that good things are happening at Wolf Meadow. We are, have been blessed with great administration that has come on since I've been there, and that's wonderful. I've had the pleasure of working with all of them. The level of instruction the kids are getting is outstanding, and I wouldn't have my kids go anywhere else. The growth is phenomenal. The success and pride that the kids on their faces is just incredible. We, as a school family, have made many improvements with monies that we were able to raise. We have participated in the following improvements: newly planted walls, cafeteria makeover, new desks and chairs, some media center furniture. Matter of fact, they unloaded new furniture today. You guys should come out and see it, it's wonderful. We helped purchase a new marquee sign. Furthermore, the Wolf Meadow students and families have participated in several beautification days where we worked together to improve the grounds by doing small projects. While we are working toward a goal, we realize that we cannot accomplish what is needed on our own. The students, families, and faculty of Wolf Meadow would greatly appreciate any funds that could be earmarked for our school as you plan the coming budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kirsten. You did real good on your time there. You had a few seconds left. We appreciate you coming, and one thing I wanted to say, this, when we have the public hearings like that, this is the time for you to talk to us, so we don't talk to you, you talk to us this time, okay? All right, our next speaker that we have scheduled here is Keisha Sandage. Is Keisha here?
Hi.
There she is, okay. Keisha, I think you've got, you're as an individual, so you've got three minutes, I believe. Okay? Thank you.
Just as a disclaimer, I wanted to let you know you may or may not see my eyes as I'm talking, because I want to be conscious of time, so, here I go. Good evening, Dr. Shepherd and members of the board. As stated, my name is Keisha Sandage. Having been a social worker for several mental health and substance abuse students within the PTO and surrounding counties, I've witnessed the functioning of at least six county school systems. As a result, I am able to say with certainty that Cabarrus County Schools is a well-balanced entity. I am a proud parent of a kindergartner at Royal Oaks Elementary. It was only a few weeks ago that I learned of the health and safety concerns noted at Royal Oaks, and since then, I have been very supportive of the movement to rebuild the school. More recently, it was brought to my attention that this isn't the first time these same concerns have been brought before and discussed amongst the Board of Education members. In a short time, I've grown very weary, both physically and mentally, at the fact that it's seemingly okay for elementary school children to continue to inhabit at Royal Oaks Elementary for six to seven hours per day, five days a week, and approximately 196 days per school year. Given its identifiably unsafe conditions, I'd like for each one of you to close your eyes for a second, as I take you on a guided journey of a Royal Oaks student. Every day, as a student prepares for attendance at the county's eldest school, they sit in an outdated building in which their classrooms are nestled in. As the bell rings to begin the day, the student has the luxury of breathing potentially hazardous air for an insurmountable amount of the day. If something arises, whether urgent or non-emergent, that presents the need for them to lose, leave the classroom, the student must wait patiently for an adult guide to their intended destination. Hopefully, it's not extremely cold or hot, because in order for most students to navigate for, to additionally frequented areas, they must go outside, and going outside of the school for any reason poses a risk either from lurking animals and/or strange persons. In the event of emergency and the school is being on lockdown, several students and teachers have zero bathroom access. And last but certainly last least, should an act occur while the children are in school, there are no cameras throughout the school to inform us as to what has occurred. Now, open your eyes, and imagine if that child was your child or grandchild and were subject to such conditions. What would you do? Do you expect he or she to find pride in their school? I don't. This is the very reason why I'm standing here today pleading to you as your constituent. No more will I sit aside and allow my child's future and that of other little children's to be put on the back burner. Excuse me. If the statistics reported at publicschools.com website are an accurate measurement as to the percentages of minority students that, to non-minority students at Royal Oaks Elementary, then we are the second only to Coltrane Webb with the most minority students. Is this the reason why we're being held behind? I don't believe that. I do know, as I sit here today and I look at all of you, I am not represented by my peers, and that's scary to me. Thank you, guys. I have more, but I see my time is done.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sandage, for being here. Okay, our next speaker is Dennis Testerman with the Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District. Dennis, are you here? There you go, and I believe you've got five minutes.
Thank you so much for your time. Superintendent Shepherd, Chairman Shin, the rest of the members of the board, bring you greetings from Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District Board. It's currently chaired by Jeff Goforth, and served by four other individuals. Like your board, we have some things in common that were, you have two elected boards, two of the three in the county, the other one being the county commissioners, and on that board currently is Ned Hudson, who's a retired teacher with Cabarrus County Schools, taught vocational agriculture at Mount Pleasant High School, Louis Souther, who retired from the masonry program at Central Cabarrus High School. Several of their children have followed in the educational ways, so Melanie Hudson also teaches in the school system, and another one of our board members, Vicky Porter, her daughter Erin, is teaching in one of your elementary schools. So we've got that in common, and then at this time of the year, we're also reminded that we have in common that we're funded by the county commissioners. I think your board, like ours, also receives some state monies, and it leaves some pass through federal monies, and so that's very much on, on all of our minds now, as I'm sure. Cabarrus Soil and Water Conservation District exists to encourage the informed and responsible stewardship of the land and all of its natural resources. In August, as we start our new financial year, we will be celebrating our 50th anniversary. We were formed in 1963 as a single-county conservation district. You all will be getting more information about that event, and I hope a number of you can enjoy, can join us at a banquet that we will kick off a year-long celebration. Over those 50 years, we have primarily focused on three things. We find that focused on financial assistance, we've focused on technical assistance, and we focused on education. And all of those currently involve Cabarrus County Schools to a pretty significant degree. Early on, back in the 60s, after we were formed, our Brown McAllister, when I believe he was an assistant superintendent with the school system, tag teamed with us to get a program going that had students going out onto farms to learn about natural resources, learn about water, about trees, about wildlife. And so we've built on that beginning. I think that's probably our earliest documented packaged educational program that I could find, as I study our history in preparation for our anniversary. I would say that currently, we have a small staff, we have a staff of three, but on that staff, we have someone that's certified as an environmental educator by the state of North Carolina. We also have a staff person who has been through the training that the school system provides for substitute teachers. So we've tried to, to be able to walk in the shoes of teachers and administrators in the schools in Cabarrus County. Our biggest focus, I would say, is on scholarships and on green-collar careers, so starting with our poster contest in the third grade, I'd like to think that that's building up towards helping students get scholarships and get into careers that will have students coming out that will replace folks like me when we're ready to retire and move on to other things. In 2010, the county did its biannual community survey, and some of you may be familiar with that survey, but I was interested to note that the number-one thing that the respondents indicated was their top priority for community leaders was protecting water quality and the environment. You know as well as I do that you can't always ride the wave of popular opinion, but that, we saw that survey validating what we've been doing over 50 years, and at times, people are more aware of how dependent we are on natural resources than at other times. We had representation from the school system at our strategic planning retreat several years ago, and out of that, we came up with four main priority areas. Education was one of those, and I think the last time I was before you was when one of the students in your schools had excelled and, won at the state level, and they came here to be recognized by, by you all for that. Diane Hudson, Ned's Hudson's wife, was recognized as the educator of the year by the National Association of Conservation Districts before she retired from Mount Pleasant Elementary School. Community conservation was the thing I mainly wanted to focus on. We have a bio-retention area that we put in at Mount Pleasant High School a year ago. We have a stormwater wetland that we put in at Cox Mill Elementary School, and just this summer, we, we've finished up almost all the work except for some plantings associated with one, almost $1 million stormwater retrofit project on the campus of Cox Mill Elementary School. There is a significant natural heritage area recognized by the state that's behind the school, and so we were trying to make stormwater improvements to help clean up the water quality and improve the environment. We also are doing farmland preservation, which comes back to benefit you in that if we have less land that's being developed and put into residential houses, then we have less demands on our services, including building schools and having to provide for education for population that we can't sustain. And lastly, land use planning, and I think where that comes into play most with you is, we have, over the years, served on the site selection committee for new schools, and that's where we can be proactive rather than having to be reactive and come back in and do some of these restoration and retrofit projects. In conclusion, I just wanted to say that we are out at Clark Creek. Part of the reason we were doing that almost $1 million project is it's tied in with a conservation field school that we're going to do on some land that we have there nearby the elementary school, and I hope we'll find ways to work with the school system on that and get students out on that site where they can enjoy it. And to that end, and lastly, I want to sow a seed for the possibility of one of your board members serving as a liaison to our conservation district, and we could reciprocate in kind. We have that kind of relationship with the county commissioners and have found it very beneficial, and so I would like you to think about that, and we'll, we'll check in with you in the weeks and months ahead and see if that looks like something that might sound like good news to you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dennis, for coming tonight and being with us, and for that report that you gave us there. We have one last speaker, and that's Ms. Lisa Self with Coltrane Webb Elementary School PTO, and I see she's on her way to the podium, so you've got five minutes whenever you get started, okay?
Great, thank you. Good evening, Dr. Shepherd and the board. Cabarrus County, my name is Lisa Self, and I am a STEM parent. Cabarrus County took a giant leap forward and opened their first STEM school in the year, for the school year 2011 to 2012. This step came with much enthusiasm from the board members, community leaders, and especially from the parents who attended STEM and IS meetings in droves. As parents, we took this leap in education and enrolled our own students and encouraged others to do so with us, and now we have moved into the second year at Coltrane Webb, J.N. Freeze, Concord High, and Central Cabarrus High School for the 2012-2013 school year. This journey we have all joined have ultimately provided the highest level of education right here in Cabarrus County. We at Coltrane Webb have sent students to the county level, regional level, and state level science fairs. We have a science Olympiad team, and even a technology club through donated items that, and this is all in just the second year of the STEM program, so we have a lot of things to be happy and a lot of success so far. Now there's planning for an IS elementary school to open for the 2014-2015 school year. These leaps, however, come with additional needs. We need an updated and all-purpose facility. Coltrane Webb was the original site of Concord Central High School and graduated its first class of 29 in 1911. This school has seen little improvement since the mid-to-late 1980s, and this school was slated to rebuild using school bonds voted on in the late 1990s. Those plans were delayed in the early 2000s, and here we are in 2013 with still no plan. This school has no area for students to congregate as a whole, for symposiums, pep rally, guest speakers. There are inadequate bathroom facilities for the number of students, mildew and moisture control problems in the areas of the school, and a major safety concern for students as they walk outside to their encore classes throughout the day. We ask, what is the plan for the school, and when do these, when do these bonds become unusable? Each school within the program needs a dedicated full-time technology teacher specific to each program at each of the schools. This teacher would be able to establish a grade-level appropriate curriculum to further develop, implement, and effectively teach students the latest advancements using the greatest technology available. We ask that with the additional funding saved, and the county commissioner's saving of $14 million, we ask that this be a major focus for the program and across the county. We cannot continue to rely on grade-level teachers, teachers embarking on retirement, or part-time staff members to teach at the level necessary for success, for a successful STEM program. Playing games on iPads or using iPods for webs, for web research was not the type of technology that the parents signed up for. Providing the highest level of technology throughout the program using grant money and additional funding from the county for state-of-the-art equipment is a key fundamental tool needed for the growth of the program. But who is seeking these grants or fighting for the programs at the board level? We cannot expect, it is unrealistic to expect that our principals, vice-principals, and teachers take on these additional challenges in an already stretched environment. If we are going to have specialized schools with unique needs, we cannot ask that this has been completed within the normal school budget. We ask that a separate budgeting R&amp;B created for the STEM and future magnet programs. It is unrealistic to ask for schools to be self-sustaining and responsible for fundraising and, and creating, and writing grants to secure their own dollars to sustain these programs. Parents throughout Cabarrus County are committed to the highest level of education possible for their students, whether it's sacrificing transportation to attend a magnet school, paying for private education, or seeking information at the state-of-the-art new charter school being built in our area. They are committed to finding the best education for their students. We do want, we do not want to lose students to the charter school, taking per pupil county dollars away from our school, to attend them, and we do not want parents to pay for an education they have the right to have here. So please, in your budget, when you're looking at your budget, please look at the STEM program and how to support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa, for being here and for talking with us tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, I don't think there's any other speakers that Ms. Monroe has notified me of, and so that will conclude that portion, so do I have a motion from our board that we close the public hearing?
Standing.
Ms. Carpenter makes the motion, we close the public hearing. Do I have a second? Mr. Kiger seconded that motion, okay, the public hearing is now closed. We'll move on into the business part, but before we do that, those of you that's here for the public hearing, if you care to join, stay with us, feel free to do that, and if you want to go home and watch TV or whatever, you're free to do that as well, but if you want to stay, you surely can. All right, so we'll move on into 4.1 with our report section here, and we'd like to ask Ms. Kelly Clutz to come to the podium to give us the QSCB financial status, and so when you're ready, we're ready.
Good evening. I won't take much of your time with this report because I have plans for your time later. So this is the QSCB funding status report, and as you can see to the right, that a lot of our projects are, are moving toward or they're at completion, so there's not a lot of activity on the report. I would just ask you, if you have any questions, I'll take those at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Clutz. Board members, you've had several days to review the financial update. Do I have any questions or concerns at this time on this report? Hearing done, we'll move on, Ms. Clutz, to your next budget update on facilities and technology. This will take you a little bit longer, I think.
It will.
Okay? Oh, I'm sorry. You're doing this.
Okay. Okay, now, are you ready for budget? Here we go. Okay, so I'm just going to start into my presentation because I think I have all of the elements covered. If I don't, feel free to, to give me a question. I have two recorders for your questions tonight, so if there's something that we can save some time and answer those questions later and get back to you, we'll do a question and answer and feed that back to the board at a later time. If it's something that you need answered tonight, we'll certainly try to do that, but for the sake of time, we're going to take a little bit of that, okay? So as we start into our budget presentation, this is your first budget meeting for this fiscal year, so I just want to talk a little bit about our mission statement and remind you of that. So as we presented in budget committee, we've had three of our four budget committee meetings. We talk about, a lot about educating the whole child, we talk about integrity and honesty, we talk about fiscal responsibility and efficient operations, and we talk about data-driven decisions, but ultimately, we want some, we want to achieve success and educational excellence. So just a reminder of our mission statement, the purpose for us to be here. The next, it's a picture, is of our budget committee, and so all of these folks have participated in our budget planning and the information that we'll be sharing with you over the next three meetings. The final meeting is, I hope that we'll have all your answers, your questions answered, and we'll be able to adopt a proposed budget at that time, that's April the 15th. So these are the people that have been participating in our budget meetings, and these are the names and how, who they represent, what system or school or establishment they represent, just for your information. And so just now, a little history on our budget committee. We were established, we established our budget committee in December of 2010, and that was to prepare for significant cuts to our budget. We cut over $6 million that year. We committed that team for two years of budget sessions. We wanted to, to teach them what we knew, and we wanted to hold on to them for at least a year. So now we've established the second round of budget committee. We have new members, and we are asking them to stay with us for two years, too. Okay? All right. So the goal of our budget committee, what, what is our purpose and what should we do? So the primary thing is we want to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars, and so that's what we spend a lot of time on. We analyze our data, we ask those questions, and so that when it comes to you, hopefully those things are resolved, okay? We want to, we want to present a recommendation to the board, that's something that you feel comfortable, that the committee has, has researched thoroughly. So who participated in this budget process? We have over 25, at least 25 members of our budget committee. We have various directors of Cabarrus County Schools, as they're needed for specific programs, we'll call those people in. And then we have the, at least 52 subcommittees that we talked with personally and gathered data from, and, and those are, I've listed the committees that we had. Okay? All right. So we start our meeting with our budget norms, budget committee norms, and...
...................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
our funding level is at the county. What we're asking you to do is determine what's important and set your priorities. We want to make sure that there, so when the funding does come, we know where those dollars are going to be, no matter how much it is. So the next question is, how do we directly impact student performance? And so if you look at the diagram here, so in the center is improving student performance, and so what does it take to make sure that we improve student performance? And so all of these things on the outside, improving teacher morale, recruiting, retaining excellent teachers, providing fair and equitable pay, allowing sufficient time, teacher time for planning, sufficient time for teacher development, and providing the essential tools and supplies. All of those are very important elements that we know impact student performance. Okay? So the next document is just for your information. It's one of those documents that we did, we talked a lot about in our Budget Committee. I wanted you to see, this is how we get our state funds, and often I tell you how restrictive we are. So I've just given you a picture of that. So the green, anything highlighted in green, those categories are restricted to salary and benefits. The state is only going to allow me to spend that on salary and benefits, nothing else. The items in blue are restricted to salary and programmatic needs for that specific program. So if you look down and it says exceptional children, I can pay salaries and I can pay programmatic needs for exceptional children, but I can't do anything else. So this is just to give you an idea of how restrictive our state funds are, okay? There's not a lot of flexibility there. Okay. And so now I wanted to share with you our current budget and how those different funding sources are reflected. So this is our operational budget, and operational budget does not include capital, does not include our child nutrition program or our Kids Plus program. This is just our operational, what helps us, what we operate with on a day-to-day basis. So 63% of our current budget, operating budget, is funded by the state. 27% is funded by local funds, and 7% is funded by federal. Now, that local special that you see there, that's our head, we put that in an account, that's our Head Start, that's our More For, that's our restricted funds where we collect Bible fees, and then we pay Bible teachers. Anything that's restricted comes in and goes out for that specific purpose, goes into that account, okay? You're going to see that a couple of times here. Okay? So now we're looking at total operational by object, which means basically, how do we spend this money? So 84% of our total budget is spent on salaries and benefits. 2% is purchasing service, purchase services, so like contract services, that kind of thing. 9% supplies and equipment, and then you have your fixed costs, like your utilities and your insurance and that type of thing. Those 5% of our budget. Okay? So now, the next graph is our local operational budget. So we did entire operational budget, now we're doing local, so 52% of the funds that we receive from the local level are salary and benefits, 5% purchases, 26% supplies and equipment, and you'll see there, there's a significant amount there that's for fixed costs that we spend on with our local money, because you can only pay those costs from local dollars. So this graph, I like this one. So what we're showing here is of the $186 million that we pay salary, this is who pays that $186 million. So 76% of the $186 million is paid from state, 15% is paid from local, and 7% is paid from federal. But what you can see as you go across, so the numbers for purchased services and supplies and fixed costs are much lower, but you're seeing that local is paying a bigger percentage of those services, and the state is paying a huge percentage of our salaries and benefits, which just goes to show you, there's a lot of restrictions on state. Okay? So now we're looking at the state operations budget by object, and so with our state money, again, 97% of that's salary and benefits, so we spend almost all of our money on salary and benefits. Even those that we're not restricted to spend it on, we do spend it on salary and benefits. That's what it takes to run the system. So the other percent, 3%, it's a small amount in purchasing services, small amount in supplies and equipment, and then you have very, very, very small amount that is fixed cost because we don't generally pay any, that's primarily going to be some insurance costs that they allowed. We can't pay utilities from that account. Okay? So now we're looking at our federal dollars in the same way. So salaries and benefits of our federal is 88%, and then we have some supplies and equipment, some purchase services. So we often hear that we're compared to Union County a lot, so we want to know in our budget conversations, well, how do we compare to Union? Their growth and our growth has been just unheard of in the state, and so as we looked at Union, we just did a comparison of the last five years. And so what I'm showing you is our ADM, is our average daily membership, the number of students we have in comparison to them. I'm showing this state per pupil expenditure, so how much money each system gets from the state, also the federal, the local, and then the total. So then I'm indicating the difference in per pupil funding, and so for the first year, 2011, 2012, Union County received $618.18 more than Cabarrus County Schools does at the total level. There's pieces, we can break, we'll break down those pieces next, but if we were to receive, that $618 is not, doesn't resonate a lot with how much money that that would be for our system, and so that's why I'm doing this for you, is that if we received $618 more per pupil and we have 29,000 students, that means our total yearly increase would be $18 million if we were funded at the same level as Union. So that's the point of this data here. We just want to show you where we are. And so over the last, and then I'm giving you some history there. It didn't change a whole lot. They're significantly funded better than us. Okay? There's a couple of reasons for that, and we can talk about that. So in the next graph, what I'm showing you is the breakdown of that. So how does that 8 million, how do you drive at that 8 million dollars, and where's the difference? So what you're seeing is that they receive significantly more federal dollars than we do, and they receive significantly more local dollars than we do. And so there's a negative for, basically, they've received more state dollars than we did in that 2011, 2012 year, and that's because we were able to use our flexibility that the state gave us to maximize our state savings. I think you're going to see that that number's going to change next year, and so if you look at the previous data, you'll see that Union and we were right there together. They're not significantly more as far as state, and they're not significantly less. We kind of changed places a couple of times. The state is not where the focus on the change is. It's federal and local dollars is where you're seeing the significance. So Dr. Shepherd tells us that our goal is, we want to be one of the top 10 school districts. And so often, when I pulled data in the past, I've pulled it to, and I'll look at systems that are our size and that are in our region and that kind of thing, but it makes sense that if we're going to be a top 10 district, we should start comparing to top 10 districts. So that's the data that we've pulled for you. And so the first, and I did some sorting, this is primarily visual for you. So at the top, I pulled the top 10, and then Cabarrus is at the bottom, and I just showed their funding and where we are, okay? So on the bottom of this page, I sorted it based on state funding, and I've highlighted where Cabarrus is. So only out of these top 10, we're not looking at 115 LEAs, we'll look at 115 LEAs later, but out of these top 10, in state funding, Cabarrus is 7th, which isn't too bad because of the flexibility of the state funding that we were able to take advantage of. So if we go to the local funding, it's on the next page, and if you look at all of these systems and ranked, sorted by local funding, we're at the very bottom, okay? So everyone in the top 10 gets significantly more dollars than we do, okay? And then the bottom is federal funding, and you can see that we're 10th out of 11 for federal funding. There's only one system that gets less than we do. Okay? And the last page that I have is total funding. So if we look at the funding based on total, we are again last. Okay? All right. So now, what I want to show you is, I don't want to confuse you about where we are in the top 10 versus the 115 LEAs. So now I'm showing you where we are within the 115. We want to be top 10, so we're looking at top 10 data, but if we look at 115 LEAs, this is where we are, okay? And what you're going to see is we are way down here, highlighted. So if you'll note that we're 107 on state data this year, we were 114 last year, the previous year, okay? We are 114 in total. So you have to make sure that we understand that we're talking about the same thing, we're talking about total funding, and we're talking about state funding. So this year, 2011, 2012, we're 114 in total funding, so there's only one person, one system that gets less funding than we do in total. And last year, we were 114 in state funding, the previous year, we were 114 in state funding. So we get to be last in both arenas over the years. Okay? And so why do I show you this? There, that's what I want to show you, I'm sorry. So why do I show you this? Because I want you to understand, the same way with Union, if we were to get the same funding as Union did, I showed you there was an $18 million difference in the funding they receive and the funding we receive. If we were funded at the same level that any of these systems are, these are the additional dollars that we would bring in on an annual basis. So if you look at Mooresville City, that's $9 million. If you look at Asheville City, that's $115 million. Now, I don't want to suggest that we would just, we would go out and hire all of these teachers, I'm just trying to give you a vision of how to wrap your head around that amount of money. So with Mooresville City Schools, if we were funded at that same level, we could hire 166 more teachers in our school system, and that's significant. Now, Jason tells me that's not what we would do, we would have to, we have to have staff development, we have to have all, we have to have all the tools to make sure that it works, but just to give you an idea of what we could do with $9 million. Okay?
This is normalized to our system's size. So you've taken the ADMs from each of the respective units or school systems, and then you've projected it against the 29,900 and some odd folks that we have in our, or children we have in our district, right?
Yes, that's exactly right. So, right, we talked about a per pupil funding, so I pulled it down to a per pupil, then the difference comes out, you multiply that by the 29,000 in our system, so this would actually literally be, if we were funded on the same per pupil level, we would receive this much money for the amount of students that we have. All right. So that's my overall budget presentation, so that you'll have an idea of where our money comes from. So I'm ready to move into the maintenance portion, but I will certainly take questions, take note of your questions if you have some on those pieces, or if Chair Shu would like to wait till the end, that's perfectly fine.
I think we probably just need to move right along, and I just would like to recommend that the board members write their questions down, page number, that type of thing, so that whenever it comes time for that, we'll be able to refer right to the page and get right to that question, and if it's something that you can't answer tonight, then like you said, we can get that at another meeting or get it in a Friday report.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we're going to move on to, this is our facilities and grounds budget, and in every system, you do not have a separate facilities and grounds budget, but in Cabarrus County Schools, we do, and that's because we work together with the county, it's called a maintenance agreement. So with that, they separate our funding, you will have our regular local funding, and then we have a portion that specifically addresses maintenance and grounds needs. And so, and we do not interchange those, it's again another restriction that we deal with. So if we're looking at the document before you, we're showing you a lot of detail. It's basically, when the county gives us $7 million, this is exactly how we spend it, okay? And we wanted you to have that level of detail, and I'm going to let you ask any questions that you have, but I'm going to go on. I have a document that I call a simple document, because I think that, those documents are a little bit cumbersome. So what we're doing is, the first two documents, the first couple of pages is without expansion. So over the last couple of years, we've been, you know, in a really difficult financial situation with the county and state, and we've been told there's no additional funding, and you need to just take care of, we need to continue to operate with the same level of funding. So if that were to happen, and we received no additional funding, I've given you a document that says without expansion. So this is how we would have to operate. Basically, as the cost of supplies and increases to expenses go up, we have to take it from somewhere else and kind of move that around, and so that's what I'm showing you on the first document. And then, starting on page 31, I'm showing you, we're going to make a request to the county, and we're going to say, we need these things, and if those things are funded, this is how it would look in detail, okay? And I'm going to let you view that on your own, because I'm going to go to this document that just makes it a little simpler as we talk about our request. So I'm going to focus on the left-hand side, the buildings, the buildings column, we'll go down the buildings, and then when we get to grounds, we'll go to grounds. So the first item is, we have to plan for any raises that we get at the state level. So the only number that I'm aware of right now is a 5%.
Excuse me, Ms. Klutz, what page are you on?
I'm sorry, it's page 34. Is everyone there? Okay, we're good? Okay. So we need to plan for raises, so if the state pays a salary increase, then local is responsible for the employees that are paid locally. And so this is a component of our local budget, so we'll ask for that separately because it's in the maintenance agreement. So if we were to get a 5% salary increase for the maintenance employees and grounds employees, and then we would need to calculate benefits on top of that, it would end up being approximately $120,000 just for that group, and so we'll ask for that. The second item is an increase for repairs budget, and so we've, and we've given you some information there in the little paragraph, and then what we've also done for you is we've attached a justification form. Anything that we're asking the county for that's not standard salaries, we're going to give you a whole page, and I'm going to flip over it real quick, you guys don't have to move yours, I want to show you. So these are our justification documents, and if we're asking the county for something, we want to give them as much information as we possibly can to tell them why we need what we need. So if you have, if you want any detail on that item, then go to our justification page, okay? So we'll have one for everyone. So essentially, there's several things that make up that $273,000, but basically, we, in the past, we had a capital outlay budget that included mobile units, moving those mobile units and paying for those lease units, and so what's happened, as we have no longer receiving capital, or the capital amount is very small, it's a million dollars, and it's just enough to take care of that one lease that we have, a rolling continuous lease. So we haven't had any money for anything else. So what's happened is, we have to... So what's happened is we have to absorb those expenses into other budgets. We absorb the mobile unit and the mobile lease into the, into the maintenance budget. Now we're seeing we can't afford to do the things that we need to do. So we're asking to increase those just regular repair line items, because we've had to absorb cost. And we've had normal increases in cost, in other costs. The more, the larger our capital list grows, it's, you know, over $250 million right now, the more things we're not repairing and replacing new, we have more things to break, and we're having to patch. So that's kind of where those line items come from. So the next item that we're looking at for the facilities request is custodial equipment replacement. And again, that's one of those items that, over the years, used to be in capital outlay. So we would get X number of dollars to purchase this equipment. And so that went away. We haven't replaced any equipment for years, and so that's why you're seeing this request now in facilities. Vehicle replacements, so the, and you can look at your justification form for that. There's page, page 37 is where that justification is. And so we have significant miles on vehicles. We've had to not replace vehicles over years because of the budget cuts. We're taking care of more students with the same amount of money. And so you have to make choices. And vehicles were not a choice that we've made over the last couple of years, but we're, we're behind now. Okay? I'm going to go down to number three, is request for additional staff. And so the facilities department is requesting these additional staff, a custodian. And I'm going to let you read your justifications and let me know if you have questions. A custodian, a kitchen equipment technician, and we tried to include, Mr. Phillips was at our budget meeting. We tried to include ROIs on anything that we could. If we were contracting now, any of the questions that we had in the budget committee, we came back and updated the justification document for the questions that you had. So certainly just let us know if there's anything else that you need answers to. And so we've had a camera technician, HVAC controls, and that's, that's the positions for facilities or maintenance. So then if we, if we decide that we can, we can hire the additional staff, we'll need some vehicles for them to drive. And so that's your next request. And then there's a balancing act. And so that's what we've put down there at the bottom. It's just to show that everything balances. If the revenue comes in and the expenses go out, there's deferred revenue is basically our carryover from one year to the other. And so you essentially, what we're doing is any projects that weren't completed, we carry that over, and then we carry the expense too. And so we're kind of just negating that, so that you don't have to deal with that in this budget presentation. Okay? But we're just making everything balance. Okay? So these are the justifications for all of those items that we just talked about. Okay? And so now, one of those line items in the facilities budget is a project budget. And it's, we've identified a million dollars for that line item. And so this is the recommendation of the budget committee as to where we would spend that million dollars. There's certainly way more need than we have dollars for. But what we've tried to do is prioritize it with levels. And a level zero, zero is, we need it yesterday or the day before. A level zero is, we need it now. Level one goes into the next year, I believe. Because we were not able to get out of the level zeros, I've given you the level zeros. Everything that's highlighted is something we anticipate funding in this budget cycle. Anything below that pink, red, whatever color line that is, would not be able to be funded. So the reason I give you this is for you to look at the items below the red that will not be funded, and you need to let me know if that gives you serious heartburn. I mean, there's definitely not enough money to go around, but those are the ones that the budget committee identified as the most pressing needs right now. Okay? All right. So, okay, let me get my, get my bearings. Okay. Okay. So now we're going to talk about, the same way we did with buildings, we're going to talk about grounds. I moved to page 61 on you real quickly. So as you go down, and we'll go to that middle column, same way with the grounds, if we have a 5% increase from the state, it would be approximately $21,000 to take care of that, including benefits. And then as we go down, it's the same kind of thing. We've had increase in repairs, and we've not had, we were, we're taking care of more students, taking care of more buildings, more needs, and we need an additional, we need an increase in that general repair line. So the next item is the high school field maintenance. We're, there's, we currently allocate $5,000 per high school to do very minimal type things on the fields, and we know that that is absolutely not enough. So if we're going to, the goal is for us to share and community use and that kind of thing, but right now, the high schools are paying with their, the money that they're earning, and their gates, and those types of things. We are certainly in favor of sharing and community use, but we also need for our fields to be taken care of properly. So the next item is vehicle replacement for the grounds, same type information as I shared with you before. We've not replaced vehicles. They're high mileage and need to be replaced. We don't have a true replacement cycle. Well, we, we did prior to the cuts. We were, we replaced them pretty regularly. But since we've had, you know, a rise in students and no rise in funding, we've had to stop doing things like that. Only the essentials. So the next item, under three, is a request for additional staff, and we're requesting some two grounds positions. Now, keep in mind, when these positions, when this information came to me, it was probably double what you're seeing on, on this page. And so we have really narrowed our focus and made sure that this is absolutely what we can get by with. It's not, it's certainly not a wish list. Okay? And again, the balancing of that. And behind those are the justification for each project that we would like to fund. And so as you're looking on this page, 67, what you have is, there's also the same type line item in the grounds budget, where we spend approx, close to $300,000 on projects. And this is the list that the budget committee has identified as we would be able to fund. So with grounds, fortunately, we were able to get past the level zeros, and we're into level one. So those are urgent and need to be done within the year, so that's, that's very good that we're able to get that far. I'll also remind you that we, the county funds us for Kannapolis City Schools, and we take care of their property on the maintenance side. That's different than a lot of things, but they give us the money, we take care of their properties. And so you will see some Kannapolis City Schools projects in this list. Okay? Because they have to, we need to make sure that they're getting their share, 8713 or 8515. It goes a little bit back and forth, depending on the number of students we have. Okay? So again, your justifications. I'm ready to move to technology. Okay? So we're on page 75, and I just want to give you an overview of our technology funds, where we get them, that kind of thing. So I've listed on this document, expected revenues, and I said, a local funding sources. So there's $2.2 million listed there. On the next page, I'm going to show you that that number from local is higher. But what I'm trying, I'm going to tie these balances down for you, because the 2.2 is actually things that's spendable. The other amount is already fixed in salaries or, or insurance or telephone expense. Those are things that we can't move. So, so the other funding source that we have is, we have some E-rate. You've probably heard us talk about E-rate. You've heard us talk about funds and forfeitures. Those are things that we do get additional funds for, and I've indicated how much I believe that, that we will get. Now, fines and forfeitures is pretty volatile. If you guys are out running, running the highway and racing and speeding, then, you know, I'll get more fines and forfeitures, and that'll be just fine. But if you don't, if you keep your speed limit down, then I'm not going to get too much money. Okay? So just know that that number is not always set in stone. Okay? We just do our best to project it. Okay? And then we have our local expansion request that we're going to go over in detail. Okay? So this is the document that I told you, this is truly how much money the county gives us and designates for technology. And you'll see, it's on page 76, you'll see that it's, at the top, I've identified $3.7 million. Now, $2.7 million is the, just the regular local funding that goes toward technology. And that technology lease is that million dollars that in the past has been in capital. Now, we are asking, and the county is jointly asking, that the commissioners put that, take that out of capital and put it into operating, and we are all in support of that. Okay? So basically, we identified $3.7 million that the county gives us for technology support. And then I've showed you exactly how we spend it, what line items we spend it in. The items that are highlighted in purple are the ones that tie to the 2.2 million dollars, and those are things that basically we can spend, that, you know, telephone, we still have to pay our telephone. We, we're still going to pay the Dell contract, we're always, you know, until we do something different. So those are things that we really don't have the flexibility to move that money around at this point. So I've given you a number of $2.2 million to target to. And so the next document is page 77, and we're listing all of the items that we're able to purchase for that $2.2 million that the county funds us, in detail. And we don't generally do this with all of our budgets, but this one is an exception. So, and essentially, all of these are level zeros, and so they're, they're essential for our continued operation. So I'll let you look down those items, and you'll see on page 78, to the far right, that accumulated number ties to $2.2 million, and that's going to be, it's going to tie to your original document that I talked to you about. Okay? So that's, okay?
70, you talk about the bottom right.
This, on page 75, see that 2.2 projected expenditures?
Yeah, I saw that one.
Yes, I saw that one the first time.
Okay. Okay. And then on page 78, 2.2, the far right.
Okay, I'm with you.
Okay, all right. So we tied that down. And so the next thing is, we're going to tell you how we're going to spend those dollars that come in from state, E-rate, or any other source that we have. And so you can look at that list, and you can see that a lot of that is, is our Time Warner Cable bill. So that's a significant bill, but the way that those dollars are generated is an E-rate refund, and the expectation is that it come back and pay for the Time Warner Cable bill. That's just the easiest way to do that. Okay? So that number, far right, just above the yellow, ties, it's $1,047,000. It ties to the number on that 70, page 75, that we talked about. And then we're going into our local expansion request. So these are the things that we're going to be asking the county to help us with, to help fund. Okay? And again, you're going to have a justification document for anything that we're asking to do, that should have, I hope will answer your questions. If not, you'll let me know. Okay? So the things that we're asking, that we currently do not have, and we're asking the county to fund in our technology requests, and by the way, the county has asked us to separate technology and maintenance and from other things, and so that's why you're seeing it this way. So as you look down through, we're, we want to do some, the electronic hiring and archiving of files, and that justification's on page 80. And then we want to scan our student files. And so Matthew has worked really hard to try to do a pay-as-you-go, so that the, any fees that we get, we can apply it to scanning, but it's just going to take about three decades, and we don't really think that we have that long to worry about this. So we'd like to move it on a little quicker. And then we're going to ask, we're talking with the county and different folks about our renewal cycle for our computers, and we simply are way behind. And to, we need to be on a four-year renewal cycle. And to get us to a four-year renewal cycle, we'll need $4 million of computer lease, or purchase, sorry, computers purchased to get us current every year. And that is for the ones that we currently have, does not, does not increase the number that we have. So if we have 16,000 machines, we'll, it'll take $4 million to renew those every year. If you want to increase the number of machines, then we'll need more than that. But this is just to take care of the ones that are old and get them to a four-year turnaround. Okay? So, and then there's a concern in budget committee and amongst our staff, that if we, if we're renewing these machines, and if we're adding new machines, we need the support to take care of these machines. And so that's what we have listed on the bottom. We feel like we need two additional technicians to help us support these machines. Okay? And again, I'll take you to your justification documents. And you guys have made this so easy tonight. So tell me what your questions are.
Okay, board members. You know, Kelly, you did go through it rather quickly. It's a lot, a lot of information to absorb in a matter of a few minutes, and I'm sure that as the next weeks come about, there'll be lots of questions, I'm sure. But tonight, though, we'll highlight on some of the key questions. And so I'd like to start on my right with Mr. Schumaker. If you have questions, you maybe want to go ahead and start, since you are part of the budget committee, and you should have most of your questions answered. So that's why I'm starting on his end. He shouldn't have that many.
Actually, I've missed two budget meetings, so, but that, that's because I was not here. But anyway, first off, on page 28, you were talking about deferred revenue. I just wanted a little bit of, is that something you're getting from the county? I just want to make sure I understood that one.
Yes. Deferred revenue, so because this is, these are restricted funds, the county says, here's your $7 million, you can only spend it on maintenance and grounds. So if you don't spend all $7 million, if you have a million dollars of projects that you couldn't do in that window, in that 12-month window, then we have to carry that money over. We can't put that in our fund balance, we can't spend it on anything else. We carry that over. So that's what deferred revenue is. It's essentially a carryover of funds from one year to the other.
Okay, because in the expansion and in the, I guess, if you had one with expansion and one without expansion, the deferred revenue was always the exact same, pretty much?
Yeah. And so we're trying to minimize the, the impact on the budget because of anything that carries over, because you don't, you don't really care about the carryover. So if we, if we have projects that are budgeted, and they're not, they're not finished by the end of the year, we're going to continue, we're going to carry that over, and we're going to do those. So the revenue and the expense is going to be equal. So I'm trying to minimize your focus. The deferred revenue is just basically carryover projects that we're going to do that you've already decided on.
Okay. On the personnel that you added, you said that you, you used some type of an ROI process or, how did you determine, like, you needed another custodian? Was there an overtime situation? Did you have some kind of overtime hours that gave you some, some basis to make that decision that you needed another person in that level, or?
As I recall, there were, there's a standard of how many square feet a custodian is expected to take care of, and we are significantly over, I think double probably here is what I recall from what we expect our schools to do. So the custodian, this custodial- So the custodian, this custodial position, um, is, we're requesting would be for this building, this building, the facilities building. And as I recall, this gentleman, we're expecting him to do almost double what we would do, square footage at a school level.
And, and will this addition help you out with, you had some absentee issues over the past years, and, um, where you can get, uh, a lot of custodians that have issues at the same time, medical issues of some sort, which then creates a, a shrinking pot of, of people to help you out. Will this take care of that? Because our, and I guess I don't really know the demographics of your, your custodian staff, and, and are we, do we have a, a staff that's getting significantly older and has more issues, and do we need to have, um, some type of coverage to protect ourselves and that? Because I noticed, I believe it was last year during the budget cycle, there were some issues that Len and them were having, trying to cover all the custodians that were absent and, you know, and keeping the schools up to the clean standards that we need to keep them up to.
Right. One of our problems, and this is a little bit, um, swaying from your, your question, but one of the problems is that if we have staff, um, that are not, uh, that are not in the, in the buildings, we have, we're paying them sick time. Um, and so we can't, uh, there are no funds available to double pay a physician. And so most of the time, we deal with that absence on our own and absorb that as much as we can. So, uh, adding more custodial staff to the schools would help alleviate that problem. We have that same problem here. If someone's on vacation or sick or, so we have no one here. Um, and so it would, it would, it would solve part of the problem, but not the school problem that you're talking about. We would need to add significant custodial staff to weigh that out, probably back to prior cuts before we could resolve that problem.
And, and I saw something in there about a, you used to have a contracted staff for custodians, or at one point?
Only in this, this building only.
Oh, that was this building only? Because I guess part of the model could be that you could have contracted staff if you ran into significant issues, a contractor that could help you out to bridge those issues so you wouldn't have to hire more people that would then possibly have the same sick issue, sick, um, time liability, because that's, that's one of the issues that you have, is you have to, um, they're able to accumulate sick time over the years, just like the teachers or anybody else that's a, an employee, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So, um, last question. On the tech endpoints, you have decided to go to, uh, a contractor through, contract through Dell for the two technicians? Is that what I understand?
You want to, I like, I like Kelly answering.
Sure. Our current technicians are Dell employees, and we would decide, we decided to stay with the same process.
Okay. All right. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Schumacher. Ms. Carpenter, you have your questions ready?
I'm good at this now.
You're okay? Well, that's a good thing. Okay, Mr. Cogger, you're okay?
Yeah, no, I've got something. I, I will be brief. There's, there's nothing worse than twenty-five people spending all of the time that they've done, and then a Johnny come lately come in and start poking holes in it. So I'm, I am cognizant of that. I, I do want to make a, a comment. Um, yes, I just called myself a Johnny come lately. Um, I do want to make one quick comment that in the, the makeup of the committee, and I, I guess with all the cabinet members listed, then theoretically, every department would have coverage. Uh, so I, I do get that, but something, at, at least that stands out to me is, is, you know, there's not somebody specific to the EC department that, that I could see. I mean, I guess that's under, uh, Jason, I believe. But I just want to make, and this isn't a question that needs to be answered tonight, we can go through, but when I look at, on page sixty-seven, on the grounds list, and I know we have ADA problems or, and issues at playgrounds and some of our, uh, I'm not parks, because ours aren't parks, ours are the playgrounds, and none of that's, it's not on the top that's going to get funded, and it's not even on the bottom that's not going to get funded. So I guess my comment and question, I just want to make sure that that was addressed or talked about and has not been overlooked.
Thank you, Mr. Cogger. Perry, will you key down, please?
Sorry.
Okay, let's move on. Mr. Walter, you have your questions ready?
Again, I appreciate the, the time. I mean, eighty-five pages of presentations, I'm a little overwhelmed at having exposed to this for the first time. So I don't have any questions, but I will be reviewing, reviewing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Harrison?
I'm also a, a slow learner, so, um, absorbing this, um, significant amount of work that the, the committee and your staff have all put together, and I appreciate it greatly. I would emphasize that safety and security would be, um, a, a good emphasis to make in some of these positions and expenditures and needs. Uh, and I know the definition or description of a camera technician is as a technician of cameras, but what I'm getting at is that that has a direct bearing on the safety and the security of the grounds of that school. So I hope, uh, that stands to reason as a, as a justification for those needs, generally speaking, across the whole presentation. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Phillips?
Yes, um, can you go to, uh, page thirty-four? You, I'm not following the math. Um, after, can you kind of walk me through the numbers after, basically, section four? So I understand a request for new vehicles, then it, the deferred revenues, you explained what that was, and, and then the decrease in projects. But then the, the next line, the three sixty-three, is that?
That nets all of the increases and decreases. So if you look on the page that goes back to with, um, with expansion, so there. So you see the increase and decrease line, um, in the middle of each of the grounds and maintenance.
Okay, I see, uh, is that all the way at the top, or, or increase and decrease total?
Yes, sir. We have budget two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, on the maintenance side, that increase and decrease column.
Right.
Okay. All of those items, deferred revenue and those items there, they tie back to the net of-
Those increases and decreases.
Okay, so you've got, um, yeah, well, I, I'm just trying to follow, just, just without even looking at that page, um, just the final column, you've got a, uh, one million seven hundred and twenty-three thousand some odd, minus one point nine seven some thousand, and that doesn't equal to three six three. I, so I'm not following the math.
It's the, it equals, if you put the three hundred and sixty-three thousand, it's the one hundred and seventeen thousand that we're setting up.
If you add, if you add those three things together, you get one hundred and seventeen, and that, that three six three came from where?
Three six three is the, so we're moving things around within that when, when you're, when you're expanding the budget. So they also did some, I want to increase this line item, but I'll decrease this line item. And so it's the net of that-
It's the net of all of the changes that were in the other ones.
Mm-hmm. And so let me try to tie you back one other number so it might help you.
Okay.
So the bottom number is the one point six four seven one seventy-one, okay?
Mm-huh.
Go back to, sorry, um, page thirty-one, this is with expansion, and go to your far right where it says increase, decrease?
Yes.
And it ties to one point six million dollars, okay?
Okay, all right.
Now, at the bottom of this page, that's your revenue. At the bottom of this page, you're seeing all zeros across. So that's where we tied everything down to the penny.
Okay, that everything balances out. Okay. All right, well, then the, the only other thing I wanted to, to mention, and it's not a, a question, I just think it needs to be stated, since people have heard your presentation and the, the request for new vehicles, and they may be thinking, now, there go the schools, you know, buying more, more vehicles when they should be spending money on, on education. I want to take you to, uh, page thirty-seven and just read something from the justification. Eight service trucks have in excess of a hundred and ninety thousand miles. Another eight vehicles have over a hundred and fifty thousand miles. The plan is that when these vehicles reach two hundred thousand miles, we would like to replace them. Okay, so I'm hoping that most taxpayers will recognize that the school district is wringing every single penny that we can out of these vehicles, but when they reach two hundred thousand, it's past the point where it makes sense to keep them, because we're spending more money on maintenance than we, we would on, on buying the new vehicle. So I just want to make that very, very clear to everyone. This is not frivolous. This is, this is a necessity. There is just no choice. We're either going to have to buy more duct tape and baling wire, or we have to buy new vehicles.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Good comments there. Uh, the question that I have, Ms. Klutz, is on the operational budget, page twelve.
Mm-hmm.
We've got twenty-seven percent of our operational budget coming from local funds.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know whether Cabarrus County residents know or not, you know, but that's a significant amount of our budget for operations. And, uh, I'm thankful that our county has seen fit to fund us at such a level, because at this, you know, we see a lot of personnel involved in that operational part and day-to-day things. But what, a question is, how does that twenty-seven percent that we have now relate to what we've had in the past? Has it kept up with the, uh, the per pupil expense? Have, have we been able to keep up? Have we gone backwards, or are we staying pretty much on, on task?
We have, um, declined in the level of funding that we've had in the previous years for per pupil expense. Um, and so if you look at page eighteen, you can see reflection of that. Um, excuse me. So, um, if we look back in two thousand eight, seven, eight, um, our local per pupil expenditure was seventeen hundred dollars and twenty-four cent. Um, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, seventeen forty-six, nine, ten, seventeen twenty-three, up to nineteen hundred in two thousand ten and eleven, and then we dropped dramatically. Um, and so what happens is, we're expected to take care of the same number, uh, an increase, sorry, an increased number of students with the same level of funding. And so that's why the per pupil amount decreases, and so we're not, we're not keeping up, we're going backwards.
Okay. And you were talking earlier about, uh, in comparison with Cabarrus County schools, with Union County schools, that it would take an additional eighteen million dollars to catch us up. Is that what you, what you was, the way this report reads, the way I'm seeing it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, so, and that didn't happen overnight. That's been a matter of several years where we have slowly went further and further and further behind on that particular part.
And I would say, remind you that that's not all local funding, that's a combination of federal funding and, and local funding. And we talked about this significantly in, um, Budget Committee, where Union County gets some additional funds that we don't. You can see that in that local nu, I mean, I'm sorry, the federal number. They also get a low wealth, um, allocation of over three million dollars that we do not get.
Right, exactly. And that's brings to my attention that, um, if things go as we have planned, a, a couple of the board members, Carolyn and, uh, Rob and I, plan on going to Raleigh on, uh, March the thirteenth, and we're going to talk to the legislators, and that's going to be one of the topics about how North Carolina funds public education. You know, how we're considered a high wealth district, whereas some districts, uh, Union County, in my eyes, is just as high wealth as Cabarrus County, but yet they get more money on the funding formula. And so there's some inequities there that we need to discuss with our legislators, that hopefully we can help them, uh, understand and convince them that it's rather unfair. And so that will help us, I, I think, some. But, uh, I appreciate all that you've done, and I enjoyed working with the Budget Committee. I was there this last meeting, and, uh, you know, in the absence of one of our other members, and I was proud to say that, you know, five of our board members participated on the Budget Committee, and that's very commendable.
It is.
You know, that, uh, board members are there, and also, um, Ms. Ann Wilson, the county finance director, has attended these meetings, and, uh, that's a big boost as well, you know, to help her and the county understand that this is not, uh, an easy thing to do. You know, and our budget is more, substantially more than the county budget, and, and involves a whole lot more. But I appreciate all that you've done, all the staff members, and we just sort of scratched the surface tonight. We've got quite a bit more to do. So board members, my recommendation is to, uh, have, as you have questions that come up about certain things, please shoot those out to Robert, and Robert will get those to the right people, get you some answers, and then come April the fifteenth, we'll hopefully adopt a proposed budget. Okay?
Yes, sir.
All right? So let's see if we can't move on now to another topic here. Uh, we'll move on and, uh, to four point three, and that'll be with Mr. Whitkey at the podium with the QSCB project status.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and board members. How are you? What you have before you is the newly reduced, uh, milestones report. We heeded your words. I think a lot of the information on the projects that had been completed was sort of erroneous at this point, and so we've condensed it down to just the active projects, uh, so you can see those easily and, and graph pretty quickly the status of the projects. I'll, I'll go through them briefly, just so you're, uh, aware of, of where we're at on them. At Central Cabarrus, where the windows and doors project, that's at eighty-five percent complete. We're, it's pending the work in the gymnasium, and, um, we are hopeful that we can get a portion, or a, a large portion of the gym windows replaced during the spring break. If we can't complete that work, we, it will then push off until the summer months, uh, simply because the kids need the gymnasium, and we don't want to take the risk with the floor being exposed to weather. So, uh, we'll, we'll see how that goes. But, uh, we're very close on that project. With the cooling towers, uh, cooling, excuse me, chillier, and cooling tower replacement at both Concord and Northwest, uh, as well as the control projects, both of those, we're, we should be receiving the, uh, final request for payments, I've been told this week, hopefully tomorrow. And so that will, in effect, close out those projects once we, we pay those and satisfy the, uh, the accounts. Uh, the Northwest Gymnasium Project is well underway. If you've driven by there, you know the addition is being constructed, you can see that. Uh, we have our staff working inside the building. We were given that, giving access to the building, uh, last week, Tuesday or Wednesday, and started removing the floor, the old floor gym, gym floor, as well as, uh, other, other components. We're taking down ceiling lights, exits, any, anything that we can reuse in existing schools, we will make use of that equipment. Many, lighting, for example, a lot of it is fairly new, so it'll, it'll fill a void in our existing schools. Uh, and that work needs to be done by this Friday, so the contractor wants to have access starting next Monday, and, and we intend to give it, give him the, the whole building at that point. Save the weight room. The weight room will remain in use, uh, by the athletes and, uh, and, and children, uh, in, in school. So, uh, that will, and that will be the case throughout the construction period. Uh, so that, that project is going well. Central Cabarrus Electrical Vault, that project is, uh, again, we're just waiting for final billing from the contractor and submission of, of a few final documents, but we, again, we hope to close that out this month. Uh, the various school breaker panels, that project has taken a little bit of a step backwards. We've, we've identified some panels that were not, um, found during the initial, uh, walkthroughs by the consultants, and so the, it's requiring the contractor, they, they've actually added another team of, of folks to help, and, uh, but I think there will be an extension of that project a few weeks. Uh, but the work is going well. Uh, we just have a bit more to do than we expected, so. Uh, Jan Frey's roof, uh, that's prepared, we're preparing that for bid. Um, and depending on when we do get it out to bid, uh, we may wait until simply, it's a very noisy project. We have to remove all the rock off the roof, and so we may simply wait until summer to do that work as well. It also helps with the weather being a lot drier during that period. Colton Webb, uh, the kitchen hood project is in design. We have the contractor, excuse me, the, uh, design team, uh, that did the other hood replacements doing that one. Uh, Mount Pleasant High School, the boiler replacement is, uh, also, it's just going into design. We are, uh, doing a final negotiation with the consultant that, that did the initial work on that, and we should have that underway in the next two weeks. And Concord High's, uh, vocation and, uh, weight room projects, those are also well in design. Uh, we should see something from the architect in the next week or two in terms of design options for those. And the Cabarrus Practice Fields, I, uh, am, we've submitted everything. We, we are trying to get in touch with the National Guard right now. I've placed a call, and, and I'm waiting for a return call from them to see, you know, where we are in the process of the review. So, uh, we're hopeful, uh, no guarantees, of course, but we're hopeful that we'll hear good news in the near future. And the other three projects are still postponed, and most likely will remain that way for quite some time, so, um, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Whitkey. I would suppose whenever the gym projects all finish, that's when we'll have to take a look at that at some point. Is that right? The, the items that you just mentioned that are- The, the items that you just mentioned that are postponed for indefinitely?
Yes, sir.
So when we get the gym project finished, then we'll sort of know how much money we got left, if any.
Yes.
And then we can address those issues. Board members, do you have any questions on this report from Mr. Whitkey? Mr. Phillips? Mr. Harrison? Okay, any, any comments, questions? I appreciate your hard work. I don't know whether you know it or not, but this fella right here works, buddy. I don't see how you do it all. I'm telling you, I don't see how you do it all. My hat's off to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Whitkey.
Appreciate it.
Okay, our next report will come from Jason Van Heukelum on the academic ranking. And so when Jason gets to the podium, he'll have his turn there.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Tonight, we're gonna review the academic rankings from the past year, 2012. For new board members, we get a report every January, February comes out from the state of North Carolina, telling us our rank within the last, for the previous school year. So I want to take you through that report here. Obviously, we already heard from Kelly Klutz that we have a vision to be a top 10 school district in the state of North Carolina. There's 115 public school districts in the state of North Carolina. Our desire is to be in the top 10. Before we do that, I do want to just give you an insight into how we look at data in Cabarrus County and the kind of the filters that we use for analysis. So first thing that we always try to do is compare the data to a particular standard. Sometimes that's an external benchmark that we have, like percent proficiency. Other times, that's an internal benchmark that we set for ourselves. In this case, it's an internal goal that we have, which is to be in the top 10. So we first take our data, say, did we meet the standard? Yes or no? The second thing we do is we compare the data to ourself over time. So we're looking at trend data every year. Are we getting better? We're asking ourselves, are we getting better over time at what we're trying to do? And then the last thing we do is to compare ourselves to others. We compare ourselves to similar districts, similar in size, similar in demographics, similar in poverty rates, et cetera, to see how we are doing in comparison to other school systems. So I've kind of organized the data in that way for you tonight. The first slide that you see here actually does both of those things, okay? So first, it, it goes ahead and answers that question, how does the data compare to the standard? And the answer is, it doesn't. So if our goal is to be in the top 10, in no category are we in the top 10. So the answer there is pretty, pretty easy. But then you can see, over time, we've got a mixed bag of success and a mixed bag of opportunities for improvement. So I'll just give you some highlights there. And again, this is one, two, three, four, about five years' worth of data there in the rankings. Some of the highlights you can see that, that we're excited about and happy to see. Algebra I has decreased steadily over the last three years and kind of tabled out there at number 19. In math, you have grades three, six, and seven have shown some decent progress over the last several years. Sixth grade reading is one we're really proud of. If you look at sixth grade reading, we've shown a significant decrease there into the top 20 for the first time there in sixth grade reading. And then both of our science categories, fifth grade science and eighth grade science, have shown steady progress over the last three to four years. On the other side, we have some areas that we're concerned about, or areas that we want to focus on. Biology and English have shown an uptick there in our rankings. Fourth grade and fifth grade math in particular are areas that we really want to focus on. And then reading, fourth grade and fifth grade and eighth grade as well, are areas that we would like to focus on in the future if we're gonna move into the top 10 for North Carolina.
Jason, before you move forward on the fifth grade reading there, that was a significant change there. Do you have any comments about that, where that may have come from?
You know, I hesitate to speculate on causal factors as to why things happen. I have some personal opinions on things. You know, we, we could talk about class size. That is something I have heard anecdotally from our elementary principals in particular. What, what's happened there, and we talked about the Budget Committee, you have a state mandate, state law, that requires low class size in kindergarten through third grade. So when we allocate teachers to a principal at the elementary level, they have to, by law, have classes under 23 students in kindergarten through third grade, which means inevitably their fourth and fifth grade classrooms are through the roof, and they have been through the roof. In fact, they're some of our largest classrooms in the county. So that has been happening over the last several years, where our fourth and fifth grade in particular have jumped in class size, because we've, remember, we've maintained the ratio of, I'm sorry, we haven't maintained the ratio. We've maintained the number of teachers in Cabarrus County while the number of students has gone up. So over the last two years, that number has just ticked up, up, up. Good question. Any other questions like that? Last thing we do is we compare to others, okay? So the next several slides, and we're not gonna go through all of these slides tonight. You can review them. But I do want to just kind of show you what you're looking at here. This is Algebra I, taking our local districts, which have a, a mix of districts similar to us, but also those that we compete with. You know, from my perspective, Union County and Iredale Statesville are the ones that are most like us in size and demographics. You can also see the free and reduced lunch population there. That is a factor, as we know, in student achievement. Give you some background into free and reduced lunch. To qualify for free and reduced lunch, a family of four has to, has to make less than $29,900 a year, okay? And that, that gets them free lunch qualification. To qualify for reduced lunch, a family of four needs to make less than $42,000 a year, okay? So in our county, you can see that 42% of our families make less than $42,000 a year. If you break that down even further, 36% of those fam, 36% of the 42% are on free lunch, okay? So 36% of our families make less than $30,000. The other 6% make, are in the reduced lunch category, okay? Just for background information. Again, I'm not gonna go through all of these slides, but we, we jump around quite a bit in, in those. We typically are number two or number three in that particular list. Although if you skip down to the end, the highlight, of course, is, I think it's eighth grade science. We, we tied Union County in eighth grade science, so we can celebrate there. In summary, we have some work to do if we're gonna get into the top 10. We, last year, we identified several strategies at each of the levels, elementary, middle, and high, that we are seeking to implement with fidelity. We're excited about the trajectory that we're on. We believe that we have the right strategies to do the work to get into the top 10. Of course, I included the per pupil funding, because I do believe that is a piece of this equation. I don't think money solves all of our problems. But I do believe, and in particular, as we discussed at the Budget Committee, low class, lower class sizes and more planning time for our elementary teachers in particular is essential for us moving forward. Any questions at this time?
Thank you, Jason. Board members, we have any questions on reference to the ranking report? Mr. Schumacher? Mr. Carpenter? Mr. Keiger, anybody? Okay, Mr. Phillips?
Well, first, just in regard to the comment that you made about the Union County getting several billion dollars more because they're a low-wealth county. This data on the free and reduced lunch says, there's no way. They're at 35%, we're at 42%, and they're considered low-wealth, and we're not? Somebody, somebody needs to tell the legislature, they need to, they need to recalculate their formulas. But, but the other thing was, I'm, on slide three, it took me a long time to figure this one out, but I, I think I understand, you know, what, what the numbers say. The, the thing in parentheses says that, for instance, the very first one in 2007, 2008, Algebra I, you've got 20, and then in parentheses, four. That means there were four other districts tied at number 20.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that, that's a good point to make, because when you, when you actually go through the rankings, you have, everyone is tied, every single one is tied. So you could jump five places by moving up one tick.
And that's why I'm, I'm, the, the more I looked at this, the more I concluded, it, it doesn't tell us anything, or at least it doesn't tell us anything that makes, for actionable consequences. Just as an example, let's go to reading in third grade, 2008, 2009. That class was at 17th in the, in the, in the state. The next year, they are in fourth grade, and they rank 47th. That's a slip of 30 spots. The next year, they're in fifth grade, they rank 24th, came back. And then the next year, they're in sixth grade, and they're at 17th, which is where they started back in 2008, 2009. So, you know, should we panic when they went from 17 to 47? Apparently not. So I, I, I think that we've got to find a better way of, of judging performance. I think I, I like, you know, something better, like the, just using the external benchmark. Are we getting better or worse against a benchmark? Of course, the problem I see is that those benchmarks keep changing every year, so you really don't know.
Right.
So as far as I'm concerned, we've got a lot of work to do to improve our assessment of just how we're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Mr. Harrison, you have a question? I see your finger up down there.
Just if you can, please, give me some background on what the Green Book is, what it means, from what sources its data is derived? Just some overall understanding of, get it, for me to get a better understanding of the Green Book's purpose.
So the Green Book publishes what's called the scale scores?
And specifically, I meant, is it, is it a product of DPI?
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you. Go ahead, please.
Go ahead. So the Green Book is, every, every single test that we give has what's called a scale score. Similar, if you think of the SAT, how it's not graded on a 100-point scale, it's graded out of 1,600, and that's a scale score. So similarly, all of our tests have scale scores, and it's the average scale score for our entire district at a particular grade level and subject area. And then they rank those within the state. And it is published by DPI, yeah. And to Mr. Phillips' comment, just one thing that this does give us is that comparative data. So all, the, the rest of the state is doing the same thing. So that same group of kids, so another way to look at that particular scenario that you described for us, all of the students in third grade were, took, took that test, and they were all promoted. So our kids did comparatively worse the next year. So these kids are jumping around each other. And you are exactly right to say that our entire testing system is based on a normative environment. We're constantly competing against each other. And so that is the, the name of the game in, in, in public education, unfortunately. It's not against the criteria, not against the standard of, we can get all kids to this level. It's always, can I be better than my neighbor? Yeah, and you're absolutely right.
Yes, Ms. Carpenter. That'd be key down. Thank you, thank you.
Well, one of the things, and we're talking about equity among the systems and, and trying, the formula, which we're saying really needs to be fair, you know, with low wealth, high wealth. And even within our same sys, systems within the same county, if you look on, like, the comparison, it's showing math, sixth grade, and looking at Cabarrus compared to Conaplia City, the, the amount you're showing, per pupil funding is showing Cabarrus at $6,939.28 per pupil. Then you go down to Conaplia City, and they're showing $8,159.10. That's in the same county. And so we don't even have it fair in our, in our, in our county. So we've really got to work on the, the funding formula. And this is what we're going to, we can't even get it in our same county to be the same.
I can't wait to get Carolyn down to Raleigh, because she definitely, she'll be, she'll be, she's a politician, boy, she'll get the work done. Okay, Jason, thanks for your report. And we got one more report, board members, and that will come from Ms. Ann Burr. And Ann, I see you're here and ready to go, so we're waiting on you.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to come to you, to come to you tonight and talk about the arts, why the arts matter, and what Cabarrus County Schools' response is to that belief. The latest buzz in the education world is that we are experiencing a creativity crisis. As you can see from this list, the arts inspire and enhance creativity. All forms of art can be well-integrated into other subject areas, and the arts require the application of important critical thinking skills. Research shows that the arts help develop the whole child by providing activities that support right-brain development, including the generation of new ideas, thoughts, and theories. In other words, innovation. So in Cabarrus County Schools, what are we offering? You'll see that we are offering both visual and performing arts. The courses that are listed are the courses that are available to students in grades nine through 12. All other grade levels have art and music on a regular basis. We have new opportunities next year, and that is the exciting part, the part we really want to focus in on tonight. For next year, we have a sixth grade, a full-year sixth-grade band program that will be offered at every middle school, and we're extremely excited about that opportunity for students, because students will now have another year of development in the instrument area before they head into high school. We're also offering a pilot dance program next year that will be housed at Cox Mill High School. And students from Harris Road Middle School will also have the opportunity to benefit from that program. We're very excited about our strings program. The strings program will be offered at C.C. Griffin Middle School, and those students that will then transfer up to Central Cabarrus High School and have that same opportunity there. Central Cabarrus High School, being a STEM school, will now have the designation of STEAM school, because now we're integrating the arts into the science, engineering, technology, and math, because the arts, once again, are known to inspire innovation. You might ask the question about why we chose strings? Why did we feel that was an important development? And the reality is that a music program is only considered to be comprehensive if it includes a strings program. Strings students learn the value of hard work, teamwork, and artistic expression. Strings programs enhance other programs, such as chorus and drama. And for the first time, Cabarrus County Schools' students will have the chance to experience a new level of collaboration, the level required to perform as an orchestra. In closing, I'd like to say that Cabarrus County Schools believes the arts have a powerful influence on our students and on our learning. We believe the arts are critical to the development of post-secondary readiness for college and career. And I do want to thank you for your support. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Burr. Board members, do you have any questions to Ms. Burr, reference the arts? Mr. Harrison?
Just very quickly, to what extent are our programs in the school system being coordinated with or partnered with the Cabarrus Arts Council?
That is a great question. I was there today. I'm not sure if you were there or not. I saw Ms. Carpenter there, but we have a very strong partnership with the Arts Council. They provide many opportunities for our students. And now that I'm in this position, I am, once again, going to be working with them at an even closer level.
Any other questions from the board? Mr. Keiger?
Can, you, you touched on it briefly, but the one piece that I think that I couldn't remember much about was the pilot dance program. Can you go into that a little, a little bit greater detail?
Well, actually, when you think about the performing arts across the state of North Carolina, other districts have moved into providing opportunity for a dance curriculum. We don't have that. So we're, as we're talking about the top 10, we are, we aren't even in the barrel. We're at the very bottom, because we haven't had a dance opportunity for our students. This has a dance curriculum. There are standards that go along with the dance curriculum. They learn about different cultures. It's very well-integrated. So we're very excited. Cox Mill High School happened to have a multipurpose room that was the perfect location for the development of a dance program. So once again, that's our start. We hope to grow that to other schools. We want other schools to have this opportunity, but we, we had to start small and then grow from there.
Thank you, Mr. Keiger. Ms. Carpenter?
Now, question. Today, as you mentioned, I did get to go to the Art Council Summit, but unfortunately, I had to split myself to two different functions. But am I not correct that they do have a piece of legislation in Raleigh right now where they're going to require that they're actually, upon graduation, that you have to have an art credit? That's gonna be a requirement for students to have that credit, if it does pass?
Absolutely.
That, that will be a requirement of seniors to have an art credit now? If that, it has not passed yet, is that correct?
No, it has not passed yet. It is, is being presented to the legislature. And if it does pass, it will impact the students that are entering in or will graduate in 2016. So once again, it, it is emphasis on the arts. It is saying that we value the arts, and we believe that every child should have a minimum of one course credit before they graduate from all of our high, high schools. graduate from all of our high, high schools in North Carolina.
So that way, Cabarrus is, again, one step ahead, like we, we try to be, we try to get things in place, so we're, we're trying to be ahead of ourselves now by putting these programs in place, so when this legislation, when it does pass, we're on the program, so we've got these things in place, so when this legislation does come to be, we are ready for it. And so our children will have these programs in place, so we're ready for it.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. And another thing, too, these programs like this, Ms. Burr, as you well know, keep kids in school.
They do.
That's a big factor, just like athletics, keep kids in school. These programs keep kids in school as well. I'm very proud of the arts program, Cabarrus Arts Council, it's a wonderful, it's a wonderful thing that, that we're able to offer to our students in Cabarrus County.
Absolutely.
So I thank you for your report, and we just keep supporting arts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Okay, board members, we're gonna move on into our five point one items here. These are the items that we'll be discussing tonight, that will be in consideration for action or consent agenda on the eleventh, and I believe before we get started on this, so that we can go ahead and get these guys to change your disc out, you want to go ahead and do that right quick? Okay.